Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the November 21, Washougal City Council Meeting and ask that you please rise and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Forsberg, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Costin?
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Delivar?
Present.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
And Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Okay, are there any amendments to the agenda for this evening? Okay, hearing none, do we have any correspondents?
No.
We are at the first point in the agenda for any members of the public that would like to address council this evening.
Good evening, Don Bolden, 32934 Southeast 20th Street. First of all, I want to say, we had a very good meeting with Jennifer. She explained the budget, and I can tell you this, at least it's going in the right direction. I think it's easier for the public to understand it. But I was attending another meeting, and it may not relate here, but I wanted to make sure. I like the way the councilmen represent the public, where the public, we vote you in and that kind of stuff, but it's not that as much, is that when there's key issues or projects, your people look at them, you look at the current situation, and you make decisions. One of the things I wouldn't like to see happen, even with the councils approval, I guess, is a large lump sum, where money is put into whatever you want to call it, a basket, and then it can be used at the discretion of the, well, it wouldn't be the council, I guess, it would be the mayor or the city. As a public, I think it's really appropriate for projects to be reviewed by the people that represent the public. So that's it.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Olson.
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. Just a few comments for the council members to consider and the city budget writers to think of. In the budget, there are, for each department, you have an item called insurance. It's just a flat blank insurance, it doesn't say what the insurance covers. I would like to see in future budgets, or even an amendment to this one, what are the details in the insurance? I understand it probably includes FICA, probably includes PERS, medical, dental.
Does not.
Does not, none of those.
No, Harvey, what you're seeing in there are all liability insurances.
Just liability insurances?
Uh huh. Any of the benefits, any of the medical, that type of stuff are picked up under the individual personnel costs.
That's a lot of insurance costs.
For a $31 million full-service city.
Yeah, for you and Mr. Scott, and there's a lot of insurance there for just a couple of people. I don't know, it's just, it's seventy-some thousand dollars, I think, or more than that. Anyway, I have the figures over there. I was just going to make a comment that I think the council members would have a better chance of understanding just what the insurance covers, so they might be able to make a decision based on a little more than just one word, insurance. Other than that, I'm not going to get into any details of the budget because I'm not a budgeting person, I spend a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Good evening, Ms. Terrell.
Good evening, Sarah. I'm Marilyn Terrell, I live at 950 G Street, and so does he. There's two co-fer chickens tonight, so the bear came from her place, but the reason we're here is just to remind you that as you're working on the budget, there are animals who are also in your care, and please, please remember them.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any other members of the public wishing to speak this evening? Yes, Michael, don't be shy. Welcome, it's been a while.
Oh, hi, yes, nice to meet you. Good evening, my name is Michael Rothschild, I live at 736 Sunset Ridge Drive, of course, here in Washougal. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and get it on. And I just have really a simple question, that's all I really have tonight, is I read within the last several days, maybe a week, that there's going to be a week, an automatic recount on our city council position number two, but I haven't been able to read or find out when that will be, and I'm just wondering if anybody here knows, maybe someone who's read about when that will be, I don't know if it's within a few days, a week, you know, a few weeks?
I would imagine the recount is set by the county elections office.
Certified 29th, is my understanding.
It'll be certified the 29th, and the recount will be the 5th.
Oh, the 5th of December? Okay, so that answers it all. I keep looking on the website of the Clark County, like, every day, and it looks like there's a separation right now, six votes, but I guess that doesn't mean too much right now, because there's not going to recount it. So, anyway, I appreciate the information, I just really didn't know, and good to see everybody here.
Welcome back.
Thank you, I'll come again.
Very cool. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak this evening? Okay, going into the consent agenda, this evening we have a consent agenda of five items. City council minutes of November 7, workshop minutes of November 14, regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $619,159.85. Agenda Bill 13211, setting a public hearing for December 5 for the 2011 to 2017 Washougal School District Capital Facilities Plan and Impact Fee Update. An Agenda Bill 13311, setting a public hearing for December 5, 2011, for the 2011 to 2017 Kama School District Capital Facilities Plan and Impact Fee Update.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. New business, Agenda Bill 13411, 2011 Budget Amendment Number Four. Jennifer?
Thank you, council and mayor. Before you, we have a 2011 Budget Amendment Number Four. During the 2012 budget process, we've determined that we would like to reestablish Fund 351, which is the Facilities Capital Projects Fund, and create Fund 353, or the Transportation Capital Projects Fund. The proposed amendment would adjust the 2011 budget as follows. We would have increased expenditures of 1.25 million in the General Street and Fire Fund, and cede the Fund 351 and 353 with 500,000 and 750,000 respectively. So the recommended action, I provide a detail with the agenda item. So the recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only, amending the 2011 budget, and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only, amending the 2011 budget.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out, I think you may have noticed that the, yeah, in our packet, the ordinance is actually swapped with the other ordinance.
Sorry.
No worries, but it's still in there.
Could you refer to the 2011 budget ordinance, please?
Would you agree by title only, Don?
I'm sorry, I was-
That's okay.
I was trying to square up which one was-
Read the correct one.
I'll try and read the correct one.
Okay.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 1699, adopting the annual budget of the city of Washougal for the fiscal year ending suburb 31, 2011.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Council discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Michael?
Earlier tonight, we heard a comment about budgeting versus not budgeting, and I think that comment needs to be pressed on our minds. I just, not that this will change the votes tonight, but one thing I urge the council to consider, and I want to respond on some level to that comment, is there is a difference between budgeted and not budgeted numbers. The money is simply being held, as I understand it, the money's simply just being held in this new account, or as I say, new placeholder, so that we can account for it separately, but it is, it's money that's easily available, it's not restricted by law, it's not restricted by policy that I'm aware of, and it can be moved and transferred if we need it in other, into the other budget. So the money is available for the projects regardless of whether we make this adoption tonight or not. However, this adoption will make next, you know, the next budget discussion, which we have in a couple of minutes, a lot easier because it dovetails right in. But the one caution that I would urge the council to consider is that psychologically there is a difference between budgeted and not budgeted monies, because if, how many times have we heard the question, is it budgeted? And if that's the only threshold by which you say, oh, well, then I guess we have money for it, then this is the decision right now. And the gentleman from the public mentioned that we should consider, that we shouldn't let it just be at the administration's discretion. I would actually submit that it's always the council's approval, anything over, I forget the dollar amount, but it's a small dollar amount, a thousand, I think it is, or something like that, where the budget, the item has to be approved by the council. So the council's going to be approving appropriation, large appropriations from these funds that we're putting in there, so it's not going to be simply at the discretion of the administration. Having said that, I think it's always wise for the council to review items, not just is it budgeted or not budgeted, but is it wise?
Paul?
No, go ahead.
Do you want to respond to Michael's comment?
No.
Okay, if I may. And I share Councilman Delivar's concerns. By moving this money into this fund, we're giving the administration carte blanche to spend it. They don't have to come back to the council and say, mother, may I? There are times when that kind of discretion is very valuable. With this amount of money, I'd rather see it come back to the council, as Councilman Delivar pointed out. A question, Jennifer, if I may.
Point of order, Dave.
Yes.
None of these funds would be spent without it coming back to council. I do not have the ability to unilaterally spend funds that have not been identified in the budget and have not been project-specific and/or expense-specific.
Correct me, if you put it, if you will, then if you put it in this fund, it still comes back to the council.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if my comments weren't clear on that, but that was what I was trying to-
Well, I had the same concern, because we did that last year with the vehicle fund.
You, when you funded the ERNR fund, you also had an additional addendum that identified the vehicles that were being purchased out of that as part of the entire budget package and the items that came back later for those.
And the expenses that have come out of that, the expenditures that have come out of that for this year have been limited to that addendum?
I don't know that we've bought anything else out of there.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dave.
No, that's fine.
I didn't think of that ahead of time.
We cannot, we cannot administratively expend funds outside of limits of appropriation. And so, the council through ordinance, whether it's the original budget or through amended budgets, sets those appropriations, and we provide some detail as to what is anticipated for those expenditures. Once those appropriations are made, there is some discretion at the administrative level within the limits of those appropriations, but this budget amendment does not appropriate any expenditures at all, it sets aside funds. Later, in your proposed 2012 budget, there is requested appropriation for two specific projects, one out of each of the funds, actually three, I believe.
That's my confusion, thank you very much. Sean, thanks for catching that. The other question I've got on Fund 351 here, as I understand it from the material in the back here in the budget discussion we had over the last couple of weeks, there was $681,000 and change in this fund, and it was transferred from this fund to the general fund.
Correct.
And now we're proposing to transfer back 500,000.
Correct.
I like this already, it's $181,000 to the good and the reserves, I like that. And I think that pretty well answers my question, except that the $750,000 for the CP fund, is that coming from reserves?
All of this would be-
All of it is.
Okay.
I actually would object to that. Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that none of that comes from reserves, it comes from unreserved funds, right? So excess funds.
Correct, thank you.
Right.
It's not coming from the 16 percent policy restricted reserves, it's coming from the remaining unrestricted reserves in the general fund.
And that's exactly what I was thinking of, I just didn't name it properly. I look at the 16 percent as set aside and not touchable.
Right.
So anything else between that and the budget is the reserves.
The unrestricted reserves, correct.
Thank you, unrestricted reserves, okay.
Paul?
Takes a while to get a handle on this, thank you.
Couple of comments. I've been on council now for, since April of '07, and one of the things that I think surprised me once I got here is that this city, and in fact, most of the municipalities and governments in the state of Washington, do not have a history of spend to budget. I know that that runs counter to your experience in the Army and in California, but that's not how we do it here. For many years, we budgeted money for, actually, several hundred thousand dollars for snow removal in the public works budget, and if it wasn't spent, it rolled over. It's not like the Public Works Director went out to try to figure out how to spend that money every year. It's just not the way we do things here, and never have. There also, as the mayor pointed out, is no carte blanche involved in placing these reserve funds. It still requires the approval of council to spend it, just like it would any other contracted or budgeted, or expenditure that is in excess of the, I think it's, was it now, seven and a half thousand dollars? That is the limit for what the administration can spend. There also are state limits and requirements on competitive bidding and all kinds of other things, depending upon the amounts and the kind of project, and so on and so forth. So, the reason to do this, actually, is to take, is to make the budget more transparent, so that rather than having a big pot of unrestricted reserve, we say, it's our expectation that we will have an equipment repair and replacement reserve, which we set up last year. We will have a capital facilities reserve, which, or fund, which will take care of capital repairs on City Hall, or any of the other buildings, or parks, or other facilities in the city. And there will be a transportation fund, which will be used primarily to make matches for grants. So for example, if the state of Washington says to us, they will give us 75 percent of the money that we need to do improvements at 32nd and Evergreen, that we have the 25 percent match that's necessary to get those funds. That's pretty good leverage. And then the other point is that, as a matter of law, these are still reserves in general fund. They're not spent from general fund, they remain within general fund, kind of, I mean, they're still reserves, they're a separate fund, but they can be moved from those funds back into the general fund by the council, by funding some project or other explicitly. But these funds are not necessarily appropriated, so all we've done is said, to make it easier for people to understand, that we're creating funds to do capital improvements and capital repairs on our buildings. We're creating a fund to do equipment repair and replacement. We're creating a fund to make grant matches, to match the money, to get money from the state and the federal government, specifically for transportation projects. So that's the entire purpose of what's going on here.
Any other council discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, a set of public hearings, the first of which is Agenda Bill 13511, public hearing for the approval, for approval to apply for community development block grant funding for sidewalk improvements on Addy Street and 32nd Street. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, counsel. On November 7, 2011, staff submitted a request to hold a public hearing to invite public comment on the matter of the city applying for CDBG funding, Community Development Block Grant Funding, for sidewalk improvements on Addy Street and 32nd Street. The current estimate total of this project is $300,000. The city's match on the project would be $138,000, with the remaining funds coming from CDBG for $162,000. Recommended actions are to open a public hearing, read resolution by title only, pass, post, and publish in the usual manner.
Thank you, Jim. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask any members of the public that wish to speak to the item to step forward to the microphone. Okay, second call for anyone that would like to address council on the CDBG sidewalk And third and final call for anyone from the public wishing to speak. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution authorizing the city of Washougal to apply for community development block grant, CDBG funding, for sidewalk improvements on Addy Street and 32nd Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? Molly?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Mr. Dunn, can you tell me if this project was listed in any of our TIP pedestrian priorities, or is the CDGB possibility from a different sort of list?
Yeah, that's exactly right, it's from a different sort of list. They have areas in our city that comply with income disparity, so we went off of those areas and applied in that manner.
And then my second question, should we approve this tonight, it would still end, that would only initiate a submittal for the grant, is that correct? And if the grant were approved, would we still, would the council still have the opportunity to accept it or deny it?
Yes, the, so we would, we would have the council authorize the mayor to sign the actual grant agreement with CDBG.
Okay.
Dave?
And if you got the grant, where would the match money come from?
That would be the transportation account that would be set up, that Jen mentioned earlier, come out of that.
Is that Fund 351?
Correct.
That's correct.
Fund 353.
Okay, and that's from the $500,000 that we're getting from the 681 that we put in there last year?
From the 750,000.
Okay, so that's coming from reserves? Unrestricted reserves?
Restricted, yes. Yes.
Thank you. Actually, they're not unrestricted reserves at this point.
Other comments, questions, Michael?
If, if we apply for this grant, will we need to amend the transportation improvement project list? No?
No, it wouldn't be necessary in this case.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Takes us to Agenda Bill 13611, a public hearing for approval to apply for community development block grant funding for ADA improvements to the facilities at the City Hall Civic Center. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. On November 7, 2011, staff submitted a request to hold a public hearing to invite public comment on the matter of city applying for CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funding, for ADA improvements to the facilities at City Hall Civic Center. The current estimate total of this project is $299,849. The city's match on the project would be $137,930.54, with the remaining funds coming from CDBG for $161,918.46. Recommended actions are to open public hearing, read resolution by title only, pass, post, and publish in the usual manner.
Thank you, Jim. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for any members of the public who would like to address council in regards to a CDBG grant application for ADA improvements at the City Hall Civic Center. Yes, Tom?
May I ask what improvements the council pays?
Sure. Yes, you may. I can read right here from our pre-application, these aren't necessarily exactly the improvements that will take place, because we're still in the preliminary design process with, with an architect, but the project includes ADA modifications, and this will be parking stalls in front of City Hall, sidewalk access to buildings, entry doors with power-operated hardware, possibly card readers, some security upgrades, the retrofit of the reception front counters to include ADA counter space access and accommodation, and also the council chambers to include ADA access, and hearing impaired accommodations, and the retrofit of our restroom facilities as well to provide full access.
Thank you.
You bet, Tom. Any other members of the public that wish to address council on the ADA improvements for City Hall? Yes, Ms. Terrell?
Mr. Dunn?
Marilyn, if, Marilyn, if you would come up, you actually, actually, we need to have you give your name and address and all those kind of goodies again.
I'm Marilyn Terrell, and I live at 950 G Street. My question is regarding the hearing impaired, what does that mean?
The improvements for the hearing impaired, I think, would be outside of the council chambers and outside of the door, there may be some sort of system, push button, there would be signs that could be read, read- would be signs that could be read, read for ADA impaired, you know, to look at the sign and direct them in a, in a certain area. The improvements as far as hearing might have to, we're still in the preliminary phase, so we definitely look to the architect to, to guide us in that area, to see what we need.
At my church, we have little headsets that people can have.
Mm-hmm.
And there must be a lot of hearing impaired people because the headsets are very popular. And I have friends who won't come here because they can't hear. So, I hope you will include that kind of comfort.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. And I'll make a third and final call for any members of the public wishing to address counsel on the ADA improvements to City Hall. Okay, I will close the public hearing and turn the matter back to the counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution authorizing the city of Washougal to apply for community development block grant, CDBG funding for needed improvements to the facilities at the City Hall and Civic Centers slash Library.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Counsel discussion?
Yes, just to comment that since I've had the opportunity, I would say, or challenge of, of helping, assisting someone in a wheelchair recently, I am fully supportive of this particular agenda bill. Knowing the challenges, I mean, right now, I have to think about when I go somewhere, if I'm going with Phil, I do have to consider, am I going to be able to get him up over a curb, into a bathroom, into a place to sit where he can get up and down? And so, I fully support any kind of ADA modifications that'll make it accessible for everyone that may have a disability.
David? And I concur with Molly. I've been involved in the ADA effort since the early nineties, when it passed. A question for you, Jim, if I may. Are these improvements mandated?
Yes, yes, they are.
I see our legal counsel here saying yes.
We need to put together an ADA transition plan for our facilities, and this'll get us up to speed.
How long do we have to do that?
It's ongoing, so there, I don't think there's a necessarily, necessarily a time limit, but we need to do it as soon as possible.
Okay. Who's pressing us on this? Is it the federal government, or the state, or what is it?
The administration, myself.
Good for you.
Don, the legislation was passed in...
You said ninety-one, Dave. I think it was probably in that ballpark, early nineties.
I think it was around nineteen ninety, ninety-one, somewhere in there, eighty-nine.
So, I mean, we're, we're probably, to be fair, we're probably somewhat behind.
Okay. I was on the forefront of that, which, on the bleeding edge, which meant that you got your nose bumped on a lot of occasions because you didn't know what to do.
Right.
And folks who had gotten that thing passed weren't real patient about it, and that's understandable. The other question I would ask is, well, I think it may have just been answered. We haven't gotten around to this yet.
For, without having any, any idea why, past administrations have not taken the matter up.
Okay.
As far as we can find in any way, shape, or form, even though it's mandated.
And I find it difficult to take issue with that because I know we've been pressed by other priorities. The other thing I would ask is, why, why haven't we budgeted, budgeted this from available funds? Because I understand that we're, we're funding this capital improvements out of the unrestricted reserves. New term for me tonight. Thank you. And, and that concerns me because I, we're looking at a period of, an extended period of, I think, being able to make very limited contributions back into the reserves from our, our income, our revenues, and I'm not sure how long that's going to last. So, I'm, I'm hanging on to that little nest egg as a way of dealing with emergencies, and I, is there no way to handle this requirement from, within funds that we've got, income that we've got this year?
I don't, I believe that we would be hard pressed without devastating programs or personnel to find an additional two hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Thank you.
Any other, Rod?
Yeah, I wouldn't go so far as to say that it hasn't ever been addressed by previous administrations, because we have parking spots out in the parking lot. I just don't think it's ever been completed, planned.
Point taken. I know we, we made a search to find out if, if there was. The, the plan is supposed to be written, and we've yet to find anything. But, your point's well taken, and certainly, as we've built new buildings, they've been built to ADA standards. Any other members of counsel? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution, the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. And on behalf of a family who needs to use those same conveniences, I thank you for your action this evening. Takes us to Agenda Bill 137-11, two thousand and twelve property tax resolution for the general fund. Jennifer?
All right. So, council and mayor, before you, we have the two thousand and twelve property tax resolution for the general fund. I apologize for the confusion with the revised agenda and then pulling the revised agenda back. There was some ambiguity as to whether or not we needed to pass a resolution for the EMS levy. But upon further review with the Clark County Assessor's Office and Paul Lewis, because we've already set the highest EMS levy limit, limit last year with the six hundred and five thousand dollar waiver of levy, with the AV decline, we didn't need to increase that this year because it's actually, we're requesting a smaller amount than the, the six oh five. So, again, I apologize for the confusion, but we don't have to authorize anything on that one. So, we were able to take one thing back off the agenda and to stick with the general fund property tax levy. So, this resolution before you will represent the needed documentation to set the general tax rates for two thousand and twelve. By adopting the resolution, the property tax rate will increase by one percent to preserve the maximum levy capacity for two thousand and thirteen, when the temporary lid lift expires. Our two thousand and twelve rate is capped, as you all are well aware. So, we're not asking for one percent this year. We're asking to bank the capacity of the one percent for, I believe, next year, to provide the council with the, the option at that time to increase the levy by the amount of increases that we've banked for future needs. So, the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only and pass and post in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent.
Hang on, Paul, I'm sorry. With that, I will open the public hearing on the two thousand and twelve property tax resolution for the general fund and ask any members of the public wishing to address counsel to step forward. Okay, second call for any members of the public wishing to speak to Agenda Bill 137-11. And a third and final call for any members of the public wishing to speak to the two thousand and twelve property tax resolution. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to counsel.
I apologize. I now ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution levying the ad valorem taxes for obligations of the general fund for fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. Got a motion and a second to pass and post the, or the resolution in the usual manner. Counsel discussion?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
I completely understand the rationale behind this. However, I will be voting against it based on principle and also based on a promise that I made. And I understand that this does not actually raise, but it allows for the raise. However, one thing that bothers me about this system is that there is a, there's a fight for pieces of the, wedges of the pie. And if I understand correctly, if we don't take the maximum wedge we can get, then that, part of that wedge is available for other jurisdictions, whether it's the library, or whether it's, what is it? I'm forgetting something here. But anyway, there's, there are a couple of different jurisdictions that can take our portion if we don't take it. Is that about right?
Not, not without an additional public vote on an additional levy.
Right, right. But, I mean, if we don't take it, then that adds levy capacity, and should, should the House values go the right direction, that would add capacity for, say, a library vote, which would take that portion of ours.
If, if we are not capped, then we have capacity.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. If we don't take that part of the pie, then some other jurisdiction can, subject to a public vote, of course. Right.
I believe that's correct.
Which, which has a perverse incentive for everybody to have the maximum tax rate all the time. And that's what my objection is. But I completely understand why it makes sense for us to vote yes. So, with that, I yield the floor.
Any other members of, or any other members of counsel?
Just that I would observe that when the levy, when the library did pass their fifty cent levy last year, it literally took money out of the general fund budget of the city because of the cap.
Any other members of counsel? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And that takes us to Agenda Bill 138-11, to, a public hearing on the two thousand and twelve budget ordinance. Jennifer?
First of all, I wanted to go through the additional papers that I handed out. We've had a few fine-tunements over the past few days, last week. So, I've updated, I've provided updated pages, and with printing them one page by one page, it said page one of one on the bottom, so I apologize. If you need assistance, I can update those pages for you in your book. Bring them to me, and I can take care of that. We still, the net effect is still a small surplus in the general and street fund. But some of the, we've had a change in the billing for the animal control. So, we had to increase both the expenditure and the revenue side on, on that to account for the total amount of charges that we anticipate for that, excuse me, to the tune of nineteen thousand dollars for animal control, with offsetting revenues from Canis and the dog owners, making sure that we're collecting the proper amount per city code. So, again, that still came into a positive position for the general fund as a whole. In addition, we had, in the fire and the parks budget, we had some benefits that were miscalculated, so we had to make sure that those were corrected to properly account for that. And so, that changed the EMS restricted fund transfer back to the general fund. And we also had to fine-tune the amount of money going from the general fund operationally to fund three fifty-one and three fifty-three. We had to decrease that by five hundred, five hundred dollars each to make up the difference in the benefit line items. Another item that I wanted to clarify from last workshop was with the debt repayment. We talked about the possibility of paying down that first four hundred thousand dollar bond, the Bank of America bond. And in looking at that, it is a water sewer fund bond payment, so it wouldn't directly benefit the general fund by paying that off early with general unrestricted reserves. So, I just wanted to point that out. The next one that would be available would be paying down the downtown bond. That would benefit the general fund, but we wouldn't, of course, be able to pay that off in full. It would just decrease it a bit because it's four million that we owe on that one, and we don't have four million in unrestricted reserves. So, we wouldn't really be able to pay off a debt item. So, with that clarifying information, we have before you the two thousand and twelve budget ordinance. We've made the budget available to the public on the twenty-fourth and discussed it at several workshops since. A public hearing will be held this evening, and is advertised once a week for two weeks, as required by law. After the public hearing, the two thousand and twelve budget ordinance will be presented for adoption. So, the recommended actions is to open the public hearing and then read the ordinance by title only, pass, post, and publish in the usual manner.
Thank you, Jennifer. With that, I will open the public hearing on the two thousand and twelve budget ordinance and ask any members of the public who wish to address counsel to come forward. Mr. Olson?
Harvey Olson, thirty-nine oh three R Street. Continuing on with the thoughts that I had on insurance alone, I went through the budget, department by department, and I came up, and my calculator ran out of juice when I got to one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars plus change. That was including police, fire, or several other departments towards the end of the budget. Insurance alone, just the word, I think you council members would be better informed if that word, insurance, was broken down more, so that you could make intelligent decisions as, as it all needed. I don't know. I have no idea. When it's simplified like that into one word, and the details aren't there, there's an old saying, the devil is in the details. Now, I don't think that would apply here because we have very honest people here in the administration staff I have full confidence in. I just think it would be, if I was on the council, I would sure like to have that broken down, as to what insurance, what it comes. That's all just, that's a million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, like I say, I ran out of juice on my old computer, so.
Thank you, Harvey.
Yep.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the counsel on the two thousand and twelve budget ordinance? Okay, third and final call for any members of the public that wish to address counsel on the two thousand and twelve budget. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn the budget back to the counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Washougal, Washington for the two thousand and twelve fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Counsel discussion?
Yes, Mayor? Michael? Is it, I just wanted to ask a general question about our insurance there. The gentleman brought up the question of whether or not we should refine our understanding of that. Is there any, or is there much of a judgment call that can be made on that? Because when we're talking about health benefit packages and whatnot, some of that's by contract, and some of it is, I, well, I'm not aware of any choices that we can make about that. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I, before we go to that, Jeanette, if you could be prepared as well. I, I believe, and Harvey, I'm not sure which, which numbers you're adding together. As you get to a million dollars, I have an idea that you are probably adding both insurance, which is a single item, and the...
Just the word insurance and the amount.
And, and I don't believe that number comes anywhere close, Jeanette, to a million dollars or over that. If you add in the words that say insurance benefits for personnel, we are well over, I won't say we're well over a million dollars. Now, you're starting to talk about some significant dollars. Pardon?
How much of a benefit?
Yeah. But just liability insurance for the city is located under those items that read one word, insurance. Jennifer, can you, yourself and Jeanette, respond to Councilman Delevingne's question?
Yeah, included in that benefit, insurance benefits line item is the, I was trying to open it on her... open it on her, I would have specifics, but it's the, it's the city's portion of all the employee benefits. The medical side, the dental side, the vision, FICA, all those things that the city has to pay a certain percentage of by law, so, or contract.
And then your items down below, pretty much department by department that just reads insurance, is our liability insurance that we pay as part of our coverages through WCIA, the Washington Coalition of, AWC.
Oh, sorry, maybe I...
It's WCIA, it's our liability insurance. And they do an excellent job for us. They provide a lot of free defense, a lot of legal consultations for the price that we're paying. All of our rolling stock, all of our equipment, liability, we paid up, they paid out some, a couple of pretty substantial judgments over the motorcycle car vehicle actually now on the highway seven years ago, they paid out some financial on that. They do an excellent job in the prices, because that's what compares to the commercial insurance.
Okay. So really, what I was getting at, and I think you answered very well, is that we don't have judgment call on most, or if not all, of those items, as far as being able to get a cheaper deal or something like that. I mean, it's just an expensive proposition to run a company, or a city with this many employees and this many facilities, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul?
I just wanted to mention that when I was on Finance Committee last year and the year before, I went through the WCIA bill in detail, line by line. And, so I am pretty well acquainted with what's in there, or was, and it really didn't change much this year. WCIA is a cooperative of cities and other governments within the city, within the state of Washington. As such, they don't make a profit, and their rates are typically somewhere between a fifth and a third cheaper than you could get from a commercial insurer. So we're saving money by using WCIA. The only municipalities that don't, as a matter of policy in Washington State, are the cities that are large enough to self-insure, like Seattle and Vancouver and Spokane and Tacoma. And they carry excess liabilities beyond that. Typically, their policy deductibles start at $1 million, and we can't afford those kinds of deductibles. So we go through WCIA, and it, it really is the best way to do this.
Right. Jennifer, do, I know that we go through WCIA, but is there anything that we shop for insurance? Do we go out and, everything runs through WCIA for anything that we would, in, in any line item would be insurance, we, it's covered through WCIA?
All of our vehicles and all those types of things?
Okay, everything, we don't shop.
All our vehicles is all through WCIA. It's cheaper to do one stop shop than the other.
And then our health coverages, we've got a wealth of, well, we have a few different options in there that have been put forward over the years through the, through the different negotiations and agreements. I think it's fair to say that some of those are starting to round down in the number of options that we have out there, and they're looked at on an annual basis as well. How many cities are in the WCIA that we're all in it collectively? Everybody but the four big ones? I mean, hasn't asked...
Well, there's other options. I think, other than WCIA, a good majority of the cities in the state, probably several hundred would be my guess.
Okay. John?
You had mentioned if we were to pay off the loan, the total amount, again, could you give that to me? The one we discussed the last minute?
It was, let's see, 389, 390,000.
Okay. So if we were to pay that off, how much would that free up in the water and sewer fund?
The annual payments are 99,000.
So it'd free up $99,000 in the water and sewer fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Or...
Or 2013.
For three more years?
12, 13, 14, and 15.
Four more years.
Okay, thank you.
Other items from counsel?
What, refresh my memory, what's the interest rate on that?
That's the high one. 5.65.
And what, what did we have to pay for the revenue bond that we went out for, for water and sewer?
That rate was the rate, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, effectively, they, it's a bit confusing, because there's a, there's a coupon rate, but there also are fees that, that you have to pay to get the bond underwritten and, and a bunch of other things. So there's, I, I know you probably don't have an annualized percentage rate in your head, but APR, but...
We, we're paying with the payments on that 400, or on that 16,485, 4.85%.
Okay.
But with all the fees included, I don't have that on the top of my head.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
But the, we paid at least 37,000, I believe, to the legal underwriting, roughly, for that 16 million.
Right, and, and I would think that we probably had to pay a fee to the underwriter for the placement of the bond, too.
Just to clarify, though, we wouldn't be paying the previous bond that Councilman Russell was talking about out of that 16 million dollars?
No. No. No, but all I'm talking about is that the cost, you're not saving much, is if, suppose you had to go out and recover that money. I mean, these are reserves, and I'm sure you know from your study of military history that pretty much the last person to commit their reserves wins the fight, whether it's Napoleon or Alexander or whoever it is. And this is truly taking money out of reserves, out of real reserves, and spending it on something that is clearly not an emergency. And so I, it, it strikes me as, number one, it's a bad deal financially, and number two, it, it's inconsistent with what you said is important to you about maintaining reserves.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe the gentleman is mistaken about being a bad deal overall, because what we're doing is we're taking funds that are earning a little amount in interest and paying off funds that are being charged a higher amount in interest. So the net result is that we're going to free up money that we would not have to pay towards the underwriters in interest payments in the future. Now granted, if it comes out of the Public Works money, yes, that's less pressure on the Public Works Trust Fund, and it's not directly related to the general fund. However, I would suggest to you that it's still money that we're paying, regardless of where the funds are coming from. It's money that we're paying in interest that we don't need to pay, and we're not getting a better deal for those monies sitting in unreserved, you know, excess money in the general fund. The reason why I think this is a good deal is anytime you say yes to something, you're saying no to something else. And if we say yes to holding on to this money, great, that's wonderful if it's truly being used for reserves. If we need to change what the true reserves are necessary for the city, for us to operate, then I think we need to change what that 16% is, rather than just assuming that 16% is the absolute minimum, and then there's this other figure, which is more money, which has been taken from the taxpayers, and it's just sitting there with no plans for it specifically, no need for it specifically. I mean, that would be a bit greedy for us to be taking extra money from the citizens, from whatever source derived, it's tax dollars from the citizens in one way or another, and then just holding on to it just because we have it. I would suggest that perhaps, just perhaps, the extra money that we have, some of the extra money that we have in the general fund, is money that should not have been taken from the citizens in the first place. And since that's the case, this is a method by which we, in essence, can pay back our citizens some of their own money. And we do it in a way that doesn't give everybody a check, but it reduces the total liability, the total burden as far as indebtedness of the city. And that's the reason why I suggest we should vote for that portion of the budget.
Mr. Mayor. It certainly could be used, though, to offset some of those increases in the utility rates. Again, it, you are, you would be totally within your rights to move funds from general funds to the utilities themselves, so.
Well, if I could, if I could just respond to that and ask you a question about that then. But, see, here's the thing. If we're talking about buying down the water sewer rates, if that's what you're referring to, then if we reduce the amount of interest that is going to the banks and to the holders of this debt, then there's that much more money that's available to, you know, offset other expenses within the Public Works. Isn't that right?
I'm not so sure that we're not saying the same thing. And in our utility rates that we have out there, that council passed last year on a five-year basis, which actually would be pretty close to lining up with this one, all of those expenses go into what that rate is and what potentially those increases are. So I would think, taking it to the simplest of terms, as you reduce those expenses, there is not the need for as large of the increase as we've put in, to the tune of $99,000 for the next four years.
Exactly. Yes, yes.
So I think we're saying the same thing.
But the mechanism of, of doing that tonight would be pay off the loan, which reduces the pressure on water rates, which allows us to not raise water rates as much next year, revise them downward. Right?
Potentially.
Mr. Mayor? Just, I think Jen would like to add a point of clarification on that specific point to, to make sure that the, the information that the council's considering is accurate on that point.
With an annual payment amount of 99,000, it, it's not going to materially affect the rate analysis that was just done. It would free up future capacity for perhaps not having to issue as much debt the next go-round for the rest of the capital facilities plan, because we're going to reevaluate that after the three-year period of the 16 million that we just issued. But with the, I know, it seems like a lot of money, but in the, in the grand scheme of the debt of the utilities, it's pretty immaterial.
David, coming back to you, John.
A question, if I may. Refresh my memory, please. Were we not criticized for using general fund monies to subsidize water rates?
No, the other way around.
By the state auditor?
No, you can't use utility funds or enterprise funds to support the general fund. That's what we were written up by the state auditors.
I had it backwards.
Correct.
Okay. And just, just a comment, I, I see what Mr. Delevry's trying to do. He's trying to do what every good householder does, and that is get their debt down, get that credit card paid off. And Paul, you were right. I, I would have a problem because it would reduce the reserves. However, there's a way to handle that. There's risk in everything you do, and I would be willing to accept the risk if the money that we freed up every year were put back into the reserves until such time as it equaled the amount that we used to pay down the loan. After that, whatever we freed up every year is, is a pot of gold that we can do what we need to do with. God knows we have enough needs. So I, I understand your objection, and from my standpoint, that's one way of handling it. Thank you.
Molly, did you have your hand up a moment ago?
No, I was actually going to ask the same question that Dave did about the audit in, you know, recent history, and, you know, the specifics on that.
John?
Yes. What I like about this idea of paying off debt is it actually kind of sets a precedent for this council, so that maybe every budget cycle, we can take another look at these loans and see what we can pay down on, and start moving towards a debt-free city, which I think is something that's admirable, and something we should work towards at all times. And so I, I do support, even if this is for the water and sewer utility, it'll take at least some pressure off. So I do support that move.
It's frankly an oversimplification to think of a city budget as being anything like a family budget. For one thing, a city exists in perpetuity. A family does not. The other thing is that there's a whole lot more involved in the thinking about, it's a much more complicated question for a city. One of the real reasons that we use debt to finance Public Works improvements is that if the only way to pay for Public Works improvements is from funds which are already within the city, that means that people who live here already will have to pay for the expansion. In fact, it means that people who are no longer with us will have to pay for the expansion. On the other hand, when we build a new water tank or expand our sewage treatment plant because the city is growing, then at least the new people are paying part of the cost. They're not paying all of it, but they're paying part of it. And if you do not use any debt to, to build that kind of thing, you've shifted all of the costs to the existing residents. And that's one of the strong reasons that we have for wanting to issue bonds to build Public Works projects, specifically water and, and wastewater. We do have system development charges, and those are charged to the individual, effectively to the new homeowner or to the new business if there is a new building, a new hookup. But frankly, those charges don't come anywhere close to covering the costs of the required improvements in Public Works. So there are all kinds of reasons to do debt financing. This, this city is in frankly almost enviable shape in terms of how little debt we have, and the fact that we have a balanced budget, again, this year, after which is, as we did last year and the year before. This is not Vancouver. We haven't been forced to lay people off. Mayor Jeffgard created a policy of creating reserves. For all of the other difficulties, Mayor Sellers really carried that policy forward, so that when money was effectively rolling in in '05, '06, '07, even part of '08, the money was not spent. There was a policy that one-time revenue, which this was, was not to be spent to create ongoing expenses. So this city did not staff up. This city really kept that money, and this administration has carried through on that policy. So it goes back years that this city has had a very strong reserve policy, has been very frugal. We have half the paid staff of the City of Canis. We're only 20, 25% smaller in population. So it's, to take that money, which was so carefully husbanded over those boom years when it could have been spent, this city was very, very disciplined, and it strikes me as a mistake bordering on a tragedy to spend it in this way.
David?
The differences between family budgets and municipal budgets, I think, are those primarily of size and complexity. The same basic financial management principles apply to both entities, both efforts. And in terms of, of our budget for the city being balanced, Mr. Greenley and I have, have come to a, a parting of the ways on this particular issue. I don't think that a budget is balanced if you use the reserves to balance it. And we've done that for several of the last couple of years. And we've done that for several of the last couple of years, or for many of the last several years, and I'd not like to see us do it again. We keep chipping away at that reserve, and yes, we have the 16%, but that's primarily for cash flow and best practices. There are consequences for not complying with best practices, including the fact that auditors, I think, will take another careful, more careful look at you if you don't have that, if you're not complying with best practices. So, I don't, I don't think that we have had a balanced budget in this city for most of the last couple of years, and I'm concerned that we keep chipping away at that reserve. At one point, we talked about having $900,000 in unrestricted reserves after we did everything for this year's budget. I understand that that's gone up somewhat. It's now 1.2, 1.3 million?
1.4.
1.4. Half a mill up. I don't know where it came from, but I'm glad to see it. And it's spending that that really concerns me. The 16%, I look at that as untouchable. The rest of it, I'd like to see it maintained and augmented, simply because in an emergency, you're going to spend money very quickly, and I don't think 1.4 million's going to go very far. This is an expensive city to run, and it's not because it's not managed well. It is managed well. Takes money to run a city, especially in Washington. Be worse in Oregon. So, that's what I, that's my focus on the reserves right there. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to know if it would be possible to continue the discussion with the budget the way it stands right now. I mean, there is obvious merit in everything that's been said tonight about paying down the debt, but I would like to see a little, a few more numbers and have a fuller discussion when we have refinement and some data to really understand what we would accomplish by paying that down. The specific, you know, the specific utility debt, the 5.65 interest debt, I'd like to have some numbers on that.
Is that a motion?
It is, I'll second it. I was going to suggest to council, you consider heading that direction anyway. I don't know that, Jennifer, you even have the numbers to be able to affect both sides, even if the council said, yep, that's what we want to do, and yep, we want to pass the budget ordinance, assuming that. You've got a lot of factors in there to figure in. I think we can probably still do it before the end of the year and get the information in order to do that and do it through another appropriation or another supplemental. But what's your, you know better the gyrations you've got to go through.
It's a, we could do another 2011 budget amendment and actually do it this year, or we could refine 2012, or we can refine the numbers tonight.
Mayor, if you please, if the desire of the council is to vet the data and the information a little more thoroughly beyond which I believe we'll have the capacity to do this evening for you, I might suggest, I think this is where Councilwoman Coestin was going, is to consider the budget as it's proposed. There may be other items of discussion that the council wants to have on the budget, but with this particular issue, consider adoption of the budget, notwithstanding any other issues that you might have, with our commitment to come back at a workshop, probably not next week, probably on the 12th of December, where we can provide you with a more thorough vetting of this particular issue, and then if it's your pleasure at that meeting, we can be informally directed to package up an ordinance that would make any change in terms of paying off debt and just package that all up, and then you could consider that on the 19th for action.
Given that, I'll just make another call for any other questions, concerns, comments on the budget itself.
Mr. Mayor? Embarrassing question time. All right. The request that I put in for having the payment down of that one fund, is that in the numbers that we're seeing tonight?
It's not, because I wasn't sure if what council's pleasure was with it being a water sewer fund versus a general fund.
Other questions?
Did you have a question?
I just wanted to make a comment. I wanted to actually commend the administration as far as this budget is concerned. To me, it's balanced and a very conservative budget, and I think that you've worked hard on it. And I had many, many questions last week at workshop, and I think every one of them were addressed thoroughly, and I wanted to thank you for that. As far as the idea, which I don't think it's been put into a motion yet, to pay off a debt, a $390,000 debt that we're talking about, I actually think that I am in support of it, but I do want more information, as Councilmember Coestin has suggested, and I would definitely like, it brought back, however. And I think the interest rate is high. I would like to see the city move forward with this, but I do, like I said, I want a little bit more information. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do that for us and bring it back, the pros and the cons, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
David?
Will we get a chance to amend, to remove portions of the budget, at least bring them up for discussion?
That's what this time is right now?
Okay. If I may, then, under Fund 001-99 Intergovernmental Services, the cost center includes payments to East County Social Services, Alcohol Prevention Services, and Community Education. The first two are county functions, and the second one is a school district function. Somewhere in this budget, I'm not sure where, I couldn't find it, is a subsidy for West Columbia Gorge Humane Society, beyond what we pay them for their services.
There is not one listed there. Under 2012, it's a blank number.
Okay. Then I have no objection to that. As much as I like the West Columbia Gorge Humane Society and contribute to it myself, I don't think that's a public function, except for the services that we provide for them, and we should pay for those. But the other two, East County Social Services and Alcohol Prevention and Community Education, I think are school district functions, although, Jennifer, refresh my memory here, the alcohol prevention was some sort of a mandate from the county?
Correct. A certain percentage of our liquor profits needs to go to alcohol abuse and subsidize programs for substance abuse, and that's what that budgeted amount is for.
And I, in that case, I remove my objection to that. But the other two, I have difficulty with, for the reasons stated. On Fund 104, First Quarter Real Estate Excise Taxes Fund, it's not so much there niggling over details as it is over priorities. Between the parks and the roads and streets, I think we need to focus on the roads and streets primarily because, one, they're in bad shape, in spite of the fact that we've worked very hard to maintain, and we haven't had the money to do the type of job we'd like to do. And secondly, because roads and streets are important to our commercial enterprises here, to the business of the City of Washougal. And so, I think there should be a priority for roads and streets. Mr. Barry, I'm not sure how we would express that in a budget. It was just a thought. Anything else I will be happy to bring up at the workshop? I'm anxious to hear what everybody else has to say on this budget.
Any other questions, comments in regards to the budget?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Previously, earlier this year, thank you for recognizing me, we had discussions about the Camas-Washougal Economic Development Association, and I see that we still have $5,000 for CRA DC as well as for Cuida. And I think I know how this vote's going to go, but I do not support continuing with that program, and I can understand that as far as, as far as this discussion is concerned, I know a lot of the council is committed to it. So, rather than making a motion to amend it, I'm going to simply say that's going to be the reason why I'm going to be voting against the budget tonight, unless somebody else is interested in that discussion.
Any other comments from council?
Okay. I've got a motion in a second to pass, post, and publish the budget ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor? I thought we were just discussing the possibility of putting this off until the 12th of December?
No.
It's a debt conversation.
Debt conversation.
It's a debt conversation. Ah. Well, I regret that I didn't say more about this then. I really wanted to see some amendments to this budget.
Okay. That brings us to the second portion of the agenda for any members of the public who would like to address the council.
Well, Don Bolwin, I just, after hearing you talk, I just, I tell you, I was, I guess my concerns were unbounded, as I understand the earmarking, as I understand how it's taken place to provide transparency to the budget, which is good. So, I'm pleased I'm wrong. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Olson?
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. I want to thank the council and Jennifer Fordford for the enlightenment that I received on the insurance benefits. A little comment, a little note on the bottom of the page explaining what insurance benefits were would have been very helpful to somebody like myself reading the budget and just saying insurance benefits. That's a, like I say, I've got up to $1,318,000, and my calculator quit working, so I think the battery went bad. I don't know. Maybe it was too high, and I've never seen those numbers before. The other comment I have is the income on the budget shows $23 million and change. The outcome is $26 million and change. That is not a balanced budget. If I have an income at home, say, of $30,000, and I have an outcome of $5,000 more than my income, and I have to go to the bank and take money out of my savings to make good, that means I'm spending too much money. I have gotten up here to the council on several occasions saying, please be frugal with how you spend our money. That's everybody in this room. It's our money. And you go in the hole every year and draw it out of reserves or savings, you're taking money away from income producer. If you have reserves and you have it invested, even if you're only making a half or 1%, it's still money that's coming into the coffers. It's not going out into balancing a budget. Granted, it doesn't balance, a budget is balanced, but at what cost? I would just, before all of you, please, manage our money more carefully. The expenditures are getting out of hand if you're $3 million plus in arrears for That's a lot of money. I don't make that kind of money. I don't think anybody in this room makes that kind of money. So, when you're spending $3 million more than what your income is, I'd like to see a little better management. Thank you.
Harvey, if you'd like to come in and sit down with Jennifer, she can go through those with you. I think all of us would like to see a different type of...
I'm happy with the discussion that was held.
But evidently, you didn't understand it. We are not $3 million in the hole. The difference between those are the capital projects that the city has that aren't reflected in those numbers.
Well, on one page, it has the income and the outcome.
Again, Harvey?
To a simple person like myself who's reading the budget, it shows you $3 million and change in the hole.
Which, which we are not, but okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Mrs. Gard, do I dare call on you?
I know that this budget process is really tough on everybody, and I hope girls all understand. One of the things I would like to see the city do, though, I understand why West Columbia Gorge could not get additional money because of all of the tightening of everything else, but maybe as a city and as a council and the mayor, we could all put our heads together and find a fundraiser that we could do that will benefit solely what we have here in our community, because I'm pretty torn having three animals myself and them not being able to. But I know they've done a better job fundraising. I know they're working hard on it, so I wish you would consider it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, Tom?
Tom Anderson, 740E. Two things. First, I'd like to thank the city for including the steps at my house to get up to the sidewalk. It's going to make life a lot simpler.
You're very welcome.
And second, on ADA, there are signs on the bathrooms, and I'm sure they're visually handy, but they're not visual, handicapped accessible in that they're not on the door.
Right.
So, when you walk up to the door, you don't know which door it is. So, when you update, it would be nice if you moved the sign.
That's one of the things.
I bet we can do that. I know those signs were actually only installed last year, I believe, and the staff, when they were trying to install them as per code, went, well, we could do that per code, but it doesn't, you can't get to them to, so they kind of tossed a coin, and given the way that they're constructed today, put them the way they are, but I believe the ADA improvements will allow for the proper movement, the proper installation of those.
Thank you.
You bet, Tom. Yes, Barbara?
I just, I don't know. Has the flag been put up yet?
It has. I have that under my notes.
Oh, sorry.
We were hoping you were going to be here last meeting, but you weren't. I was going to say thank you to both of you. It has been installed at the, inside the doors to the chamber in a frame that actually doesn't have any glass in the front of it. So, it can actually be used as it properly should. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Terrell?
I think that if Tom goes into the wrong washroom, the screen will tell him. What about the other way? Jennifer was hired because she's really good at what she does, and she was the best of a bunch. I don't mean to be disrespectful to any of you, but I can't believe that there are any of you who are as good at numbers as she is. And if she says that spending $400,000 isn't worth it to the 90-something a year you're going to save, then I think you should listen to her. Secondly, this question, I think, is inappropriate, or maybe it is, I don't know. I just wrote a letter about school buses. It was in the PR in the Columbian. I don't understand the funding. I know that you people don't pay for the board expenses. So, where does the money come from for school buses?
It comes, I believe it comes through two different sources. One is a source from the state that is included in the state general fund budget for education K through 12, and I believe the additional amounts, I believe Washougal still has an excess levy that the school district has out there for transportation needs itself, both for buses and...
and for the operation of the buses.
Yeah, that's true. The bulk of the money does come from levy money, so it goes through a vote from the people for transportation.
So if, so if the state were to cut their portion, that would be maybe 25% of the...
I don't know what the numbers are. I know it was mentioned in the governor's original proposal for the current round of cuts. I know her proposal came out today and I haven't looked through it completely to know whether or not that's still there or not. I know she was getting lobbied on a lot of different things.
But it's been going down every year, the amount of money allocated for school buses, transportation to school districts.
So that means that the city of Waschuggal has had to pick it up?
No.
No, a levy by the voters, a transportation levy.
Transportation levy.
Yeah.
And that goes out to all property owners in the school district boundaries itself.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Barbara?
As I understood the news, as I heard it, she took that out. She decided, after a young lady, basically in a meeting that the governor, the governor had with schoolchildren in a vocational school, one of the young ladies stood up and asked her, or told the governor, and she didn't think it was fair that the, her generation have to pay for the mistakes of the governor's generation. And as I understood the newscast that came after that, the next day, the governor had taken that out of what she was proposing. That's not going to be cut. And she decided she wasn't going to leave that in. I might be wrong, but that's where, at last, that I heard.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other members of the public that wish to address council? Okay, I have only two items left. One, Chief Schumacher, do you want to do a quick update on the fire consolidation?
Thank you. Just to give you a brief update on what's going on with the Camas firefighters and Waschuggal firefighters, we're meshing the two organizations a little bit more now. There's a couple MLUs, administrative MLUs, we'll be presenting to the mayor. One has to do with trade time between the two departments. That means our firefighters can't take a day off just because, because we have to have the staff in. So if they have to want a day off, they trade a day if they don't, because they may not be able to take vacation that day. And by doing this with the city of Camas, their firefighters will be able to trade back and forth and will give our firefighters more opportunities to trade. So that's just one of the things. The other thing is that Chief Swinhardt was looking for a training chief, or a training captain, excuse me, and none of the Camas volunteers, none of their captains stepped up. Our captain, Sari, he stepped up. So we're going to work out a deal with the city of Camas. They're going to send us one of their captains, Captain Greg Payne, he's a Waschuggal resident. He's going to be coming and working at our station and Captain Sari become the training officer for the city of Camas and not only for the city of Camas, but for the city of Waschuggal as well. So now we have a full-time training officer. So just a couple updates there. We are experiencing some savings now, 220 hours of overtime savings that the Camas firefighters have worked in our firehouse over the last month and a half, so that's about $11,000. And then next, first of the year, we'll be, Chief Swinhardt and myself will be presenting a auctions analysis, kind of, it'll be looking at all the EMS delivery systems that are out there. And we'll be giving, just showing you what's out there and what's available in our recommendations. So some of the things that are going on with this budget right now. Do you have any questions?
My opinion on the turkey carnival?
I was going to say, we had a very successful turkey carnival. I thank all the participants that came and all the summer winners and summer losers here in this room. There was a lot of work done by the volunteers and the paid staff there. It was a very successful one, probably the most successful one we've had in several years. So we thank you for your participation. And thank the mayor for, I think we found a new quarter for him.
One letter, one number. That's all I got to do. One letter, one number. Thank you, Chief. Paul?
I just wanted to extend my personal thanks to you, chief, and also to Chief Swinhardt for all of the work that you've done on this. This is moving forward better and faster than I had hoped. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. The other item that I have is for council consideration either tonight or in the very near future, hopefully, your council assignment committee to assign the members to that. I think in code it says that we'll do it in December. I did get a call today, though, asking if we can at least speed up one portion of that. I believe, David, you'll be bringing forth from yourself and Lloyd, an agreement between the two cities in regard to the delegates to both the Regional Transportation Council and CTRAN?
Correct.
Which, if it goes the way we're thinking at this point, the CTRAN position will be back to the city of Waschuggal for 2012 and some number of years beyond that. The reason I bring this up and the reason for the phone call today is their annual planning retreat, for some reason, is in early December. They are thinking that whoever the member is from Waschuggal would probably be better suited to be at the planning retreat than council member Dietzmann from Camas. So therein is the request, if we have any way to expedite the selection of who the CTRAN representative would be from Waschuggal, that we do that expeditiously so that they can make arrangements to be at that retreat. John?
Is that retreat open to the public?
I believe, yep. It's, all of their meetings are. That's all that I've got. Any items from council? David?
On our continuing discussion about debt, U.S. debt faces another downgrading when Congress's debt panel punts on ways to reduce the federal debt, which it will do. The prospects for political bravery appear pretty slim before the 2012 elections. And whatever prospects there are are receding rapidly. And the question that raises is, well, first of all, that suggests that there's not much leadership at the federal level at this point. And so there should be, there needs to be leadership at other levels of government. And I think this is a good place to look for that. Question is, what does all this mean to us? Eventually, it means higher interest rates. This is coming from the, my favorite publication, the Kiplinger Management Letter out of Washington, D.C. Standard and Poor's downgraded U.S. debt once and will likely do it again. They warned us about that. The other major rating agencies, Moody's and Fitch, will probably follow this time. Moody's has already warned that ineffective work by the committee would have, the supercommittee would have a negative impact on Uncle Sam's credit rating. And I believe they'll keep their word on that. And I recognize that the rating agencies didn't do very well by us in the last couple of years and contributed to the crisis that we're going through now. But I do notice that bond traders, whom my fellow council member, Mr. Greenlee, has lauded, and I used to work with him when I worked at Merrill Lynch, they've been shortening maturities to lessen the risk of long-term investment, which suggests that they're concerned about it, too. So I don't see much on the horizon that suggests that we're in for a windfall of tax revenue in the near future. And that goes back, then, to my concern about preserving the reserves so that we'll have something to deal with emergencies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other council members?
I just wanted to mention that I went to the Columbia River Economic Development Council quarterly luncheon. The speaker was the chief executive of Enlight. I didn't know who Enlight was. I knew that they were a local company, but they actually have divisions in Switzerland, someplace in Asia, and another place in Europe. I can't remember exactly where. They make lasers, high-powered lasers. The little laser pointers that we have here are maybe a couple of milliwatts. Actually, most of them, five tenths of a milliwatt. They make lasers up to 10 kilowatts. That's the kind of stuff that, I don't know if you ever saw Goldfinger, but yeah, that is the kind of stuff that can burn holes in metal. Most of what they do, most of their lasers are used in semiconductor production, either for exposing masks to make dyes, as they're called, or for welding little contact wires onto contact pads. But some of the stuff that they do is considerably more powerful. They have continued to grow. They did have a dip in their growth rate, but no actual dip in their revenues in the current recession. And one of the things that this gentleman talked about is they have a foundation that works with local schools, where they take their engineers and their executives and others that they can recruit from other businesses to use them as everything from advanced placement tutors to simple, have a lunch with an adult once a month, people through the school systems. They're doing almost exclusively Vancouver, especially Evergreen. But I was just thinking that anyone who's interested, I'm sure that there are opportunities within the Waschuggal School District for similar kinds of volunteer work. I liked the turkey carnival. This year, I won a turkey. Last year, didn't win a turkey. It was a good event, thanks to the fire department for all of that. And yes, it's true that everybody is shortening up on their bond terms. It used to be that the mortgage rate was pegged to the 30-year treasury bond, but it's been many years since that's been true, because if you actually look at the average life of a mortgage, it's under six years. So it made no sense, because people move or they refinance or whatever. So a 30-year mortgage is normally paid off within six years, so it makes no sense at all to tie the mortgage rate to a 30-year rate. And now it's pretty much tied to the 10-year bond rate, just for an example. But yes, a lot of serious investors are shortening up the term on their bonds to short, what's called short intermediate, three, four, five years. And at least over those terms, we're not seeing significant inflation built into those rates. 10 years, yeah, then nobody really believes that we're going to have effectively 0% interest rates in this country 10 years from now. And so that's certainly a concern, and I would certainly be concerned that if we effectively pay off debt now and then have to go out for more debt in the future because of it, that we are going to pay a significantly higher interest rate. So it really makes sense to, in the old Revolutionary War term, keep your powder dry and not spend the money. And I think we've been pretty frugal in this city over the, at least over the years that I've known anything about it. So also, just wanted to mention, I don't know if any people read the front page of the Post Record last week, the CID Bio something, rather, that bought the American Legion Building in downtown Camas, that is a project that Camas-Washuggal Economic Development Agency was heavily involved in. And there is another project, which is still, at this point, confidential, that is going on, hopefully will bring a number of jobs to the port industrial area, to a facility that was closed a few years ago. And there is a new business preparing to move in there. The primary hang-up at this point is frankly getting licensing on some issues with the Department of Ecology in Olympia, and they have hardly been Johnny on the spot. The city of Waschuggal and the port and Clark County have been very responsive in meeting all of the needs of the potential business. As I said, the primary hang-up is Department of Ecology in Olympia. There are several other things in the hopper, but they're really too immature to talk about much at this point. But that's the first really public event that we can talk about from QUIDA.
Okay. Any other items from council?
One thing I would like to encourage the council to consider as we go into our discussions next time about the fund transfer or paying off of the debt, is a simple thought, and that is, wouldn't it be nice if every dollar that we have is earmarked? I mean, we're already earmarking, even though it's possible to move the money back and forth. We've created, tonight created two funds, which are simply just segregations of the unreserved general fund, but those are earmarked dollars. And wouldn't it be nice if we earmarked every dollar that we have so that we don't have this question of, well, what are we going to do with these dollars? Well, I know, here's a fun thing that just came up, let's spend the dollars on that. And if we do that, I think we'll have fewer discussions and future councils will probably have fewer discussions if we had a policy of earmarking all of those dollars. And it might be necessary to create more funds along the lines of the building fund and perhaps matching funds for sidewalks, you name it. But if we earmark every dollar, we don't tend to think of it in terms of, well, it's just extra money. How should we spend it? With that, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Any other items?
Motion adjourned.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.